Time being 5:30. We'll get the meeting going. Looks like there's still maybe one selectman yet to join us, but I believe he will catch up. Good evening. As Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I am declaring that an emergency exists and I am invoking the provisions of RSA 91 A23B. Federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of 10 or more people poses substantial risk to our community and its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with their determination, I also find this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of town government and services which are vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of the board physically present in the same location. At this time, I would also welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Any person found to be disrupting this meeting will be asked to cease the disruption. Should the disruptive behavior continue thereafter, that person will be removed from this meeting. Please note that all votes that are taken this evening must be done by roll, call, vote. So let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their name, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. We'll start with Selectman Darji.
Paul Darji, I'm alone in the room at this time.
Selectman Duziak.
Laura Duziak, my daughter Molly is with me.
Selectman Labonte.
Talking Crystal Bonte, no one is in the room with me.
Selectman Freel. Not on yet. And I am Gary Daniels, Chair of the Chair of the Board. I am at home and alone. With that, we'll get the meeting going. Our first appointment this evening is with Josh Briol.
Sir, do you want to do the pledge?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. I would invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll try. Is Josh with us?
I am.
Hi, Josh. Did I get the last name right?
It's pronounced Bro.
Bro, okay. Excuse me. And Josh is looking to become a member of the Granite Town Media Committee, the term expiring in 2024. So tell us about your interest in Granite Town Media.
Sure. So yeah, I'm a lifelong resident of Milford, New Hampshire. I really appreciate all the work that GTM does in keeping citizens connected to meetings like this one, the school board, all the other important things that are going on, as well as all the activities and cultural things. So I think it's an important service to the community. And as a technology professional, it's an area that I'm very much interested in and think that I can, you know, lend some ideas and interests and just look forward to being able to help out and volunteer.
Thank you. I see that Tim Finin is on. Did you want to turn, add to that, Tim?
Um, no, I don't think so. I submitted a letter of recommendation. Josh has come to, he came to our last meeting. He, he, he knows Chris Gentry well, as well. He knows him well as well. Now, he just, he is a, has expressed his interest and, and as he said, he's, he's got a background in technology. So it'd be very useful, not only for GTM, but as you know, we, we help out with Bruce as well sometimes. So he's, he's a good catch.
Great. Now, any of us who have struggled with the technology know Chris Gentry very well. Chris, did you want to add anything?
Actually, I think that Tim basically said it all. And I think that Josh would be a really, really great asset to us, just with his overall knowledge. I know that I do, I do know him personally, and I have talked to him about some of the technology that we have been using or we're about to use. And I would thoroughly enjoy to have him on the board and have that conversation with the rest of the board members as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from board members? Seeing, looks like you could get off easy, Josh. All right. If there is no, no, no questions out there, then I'll take a motion regarding making Josh a member of Granite Town Media for a term expiring 2024.
I moved.
Moved by Mr. Labonte, seconded by who?
Second.
Second by Mr. Darji. And we'll also note at this time that Mr. Freel has, has joined as well. Any further discussion? Seeing then we'll call roll, Mr. Darji.
Yes.
Ms. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard, Josh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our 5:30 appointment is Melendi Land Purchase Approval, MAP 42 Lot 4-1. Chris Costantino.
I will defer to Andy Hughes, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, who's also on here at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. You recognize Andy?
Hi, folks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, so this is, item is with regards to a desire by the Milford Conservation Commission on a vote taken in actually 20, May 2019, to purchase a map, Lot 41, MAP 52. This is a two and a half acre parcel, a busting the Granite Town Trail. Just to put it in a little sort of more colloquial context, basically where the Melendi Tunnel has just been installed. It is a piece of land just adjacent to the trail there. It is two and a half acres. It fulfills several of our criteria for desert land, land which we think is worthy of purchase and disposition of land, of our land fund. As you may remember, the Conservation Commission has a, has a fund specifically for the, for the purchase of both land and easements on property considered, you know, what comes available is considered worthy of, worthy of such. And so we are asking the Board of Selectmen for their blessing effectively to move ahead with this purchase.
Are there any questions from board members from Mr. Hughes? Mr. Freel?
Uh, yeah, could I ask what the total amount is in the land purchasing fund and also how much the lot is going for?
The total amount in the land purchasing fund, I believe, Chris may have the figures to hand. I believe it is something around $130,000. Is that correct, Chris?
Um, it's a little bit less than that because we've been spending it down. It's right around $99,000.
Oh, thank you, pardon. Okay. There you go. $99,000, Selectman Freel, and the cost of this, this piece of land is $13,000.
13, 1, 3?
13, 1, 3, yeah.
Okay. And one more follow-up question. So I, just because I'd like to know, how is it that those funds of $99,000, how is it that you guys acquire that? Is that more just donations? Is it just fundraisers? Just wondering.
No, it's principally actually, the, they are warrant articles on town vote. So we've asked over the years for between $10,000 and $20,000. We specifically haven't asked for any this year, and we know it's a tough year for everybody. But so that, most of that money comes from there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Darji?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of MAP 52 Lot 41 by the Milford Conservation Commission.
Darji moves to approve the purchase of MAP 52 Lot 41 by the Conservation Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Duziak. Further discussion? Andy, how much of, how much of the town right now is in conservation?
I believe it's about 1,100 acres, and the town is something around, is it 15,000 acres, 16,000 acres? I think it's around seven to eight percent. Chris, do you have, I think we had, we had a number at one point. I just, I think I'm more or less correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So that number again was what?
Uh, it's about 1,100 acres on, and the town, I think, has a total of something like 15,000 acres of land.
15,000, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of a, is there any kind of a target? I mean, how much of the town should be in conservation? Or is there a point where when we look, we should say, well, we shouldn't put any more in just because it's taking land off the tax rolls?
Again, I wish I had more numbers to my fingertips. I believe there are various statistics around that. I mean, yeah, I, the only one I know fairly definitively, which is a high point, is Derry. I mean, Derry have something like 30% of their entire town under conservation. But I believe they are an outlier. So, and I'm suspecting, I haven't, I'm speculating at this point, but I'm suspecting it's, yeah, it's fairly variable. Probably, I would think the amount of land that we have in conservation is not sort of, yeah, way outside any normal. To answer your question, Gary, I don't know, quite honestly.
One of the targets for the Forest Society is numbers floating around 30% is to be protected. But you, that's a little bit of an oversimplification, Gary, from the way you put it. Some of the land that is in conservation, as you're calling it, is protected in one form or another, is in form of an easement. It is still owned by a landowner, not the town, and they pay taxes on it, just as if they had it in current use. They have just chosen to permanently protect it.
Send the message to Chris.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? There being none, the motion before us is to approve the request. I will call roll, Mr. Darji.
Yes.
Duziak?
Yes.
Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
Now, the chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, let's see. Andy, I guess you can stay there because the next thing up is the Brooks Community Land Conservation Easement.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Was tabled, it was tabled on the 25th. First, I'll take a motion by one of the board members to take it off the table.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Duziak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Darji. We'll call roll, Mr. Darji.
Yes.
Duziak?
Yes.
Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. And we have removed that item from the table. And Andy, did you want to recap or add anything to this? I don't presume anything has changed since the last time we met?
Uh, I don't believe so. I can tell you, I will make one comment, which is that we did talk, we had a response back from the fishing game, and we asked them, because we said, we said, assuming that, you know, an easement is going to be part of the, of the, what I think we all expect is a reissue of the extraction grant, when could we see some paperwork to get going on it? Because as you know, these things take time. Their response was that effectively, there will be, there will be nothing of that sort, a lesson until the permit is actually issued. So, you know, we are, we are bearing that in mind in sort of, in our scheduling and anticipation of how long it's going to take to get these things sorted out. We are particularly sensitive to this because we have a grant from the, another arm of the state, literally called ARM, Aquatic Resource Mitigation Fund. Right now, that has an expiration date of June, in June, it's for $30,000. And we have approached them and asked them whether they would consider extending that out because again, you know, it's completely out of our control at the moment. So just so I fill you on that.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that we were going to check with, I think we had some options that we were pursuing last time. And Mr. Shannon, did, did any conversations take place with the contractor?
Yes, sir. Lincoln reached out to him, I believe. So again, the, it's, this easement's not specifically listed in the contract, as we said. I know Mr. The Vice Chair brought up, working out some sort of a, basically a trade with them. We did find out, so the, we're, we're still waiting on Fishing Game to do their, their bid, and we've, we've reached out to them. So we're going to meet with them, still waiting to get definitive date. But basically, next week, we're going to meet with Fishing Game to find out what their timeframe is and make sure they don't extend us another 30 days. Because right now, our time's up. 30 days extensions is up February 19th. So we're trying to get Melissa, who's the Fishing Gate biologist, we're going to have a meeting with her and find out where she stands because they're waiting, DES is waiting on their report. So we'll know when we can move forward after we sit down with her. We, we think it's going to be the 11th. That's what we're, that's the date we're pushing for because that was the sooner of the, the two dates. The other one is still, as we talked about, sir, is, is we pay for it out of the revenues generated from the, from the work.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board? Take Mr. Labonte.
Thank you. I guess one question I still had is, does this become a cost associated with the permit? Meaning, without getting a permit, we wouldn't need to have the easement. So that, I know that was one of the questions I had at our previous meeting. It is, that I call this going back to, should the taxpayers have to pay for something that is the cost of doing business? Meaning, when it wasn't supposed to cost anything? So I, I don't know who can answer that one.
Does any, you don't have the language with the contract in front of them?
I think Lincoln's on right now. Lincoln, do you have the contract? I'll have to find it. I'm looking for it right now.
Okay.
While he's looking for that. It does not mention easements in the contract, though.
It does not mention easements in the contract?
No, sir, not, not, I don't believe it does. I'm trying to find out, couldn't confirm that right now, though. I don't believe it does mention easements, though.
While you're looking that up, Mr. Darji?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't clear on the discussion a little bit ago. Is the contractor amenable to paying the $30,000 and then getting material for free until the $30,000 is paid back?
We didn't get that answer from him yet, sir. That was one of the other two options left on the table, whether that is paid outright. That, that wasn't something they were interested in, but we're trying to see if the, the, the taking out and trade, for lack of a better phrase, or, or it comes out of the revenues generated from the project.
I guess my point is, who fronts the money? I would prefer that the contractor front the money to pay the permit and then just not pay for the material until he gets his money back.
You talked about the permit or the easement?
Sorry, the, the $30,000 that's required.
Okay, that's for the easement. They're already obligated to the permit cost.
Yeah.
Mr. Labonte?
I don't know if this helps at all. I'm looking at their contract now. Under Roman numeral two, number three, operator shall be responsible for cost engineering applications and receipt of all required approvals and permits. Would that, that would be part of that, wouldn't it?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. They did pay for the permit cost, which I want to say, and Lincoln's trying to get on right now. I believe it was around $18,000, and they did pay for that for the new AOT. But again, it, it doesn't mention easements in there. So I guess that's, that's, I guess, the question for the, for the board to decide. But we can push it with them again, if you, if, if that's what the board wants us to do, or...
Mr. Chair, though, if you don't have the easement, you can't get the permit, though, correct?
The way it worked before is that the easement was a condition of the permit, but the permit was issued before the easement was completed. Otherwise, we'd have already had the, we would already have the Conservation Easement done now. It just will have to be done at some point. But that was the old permit. There's now a new permit, and nothing, none of the mitigation measures have been resolved or even stated, I guess, at this point.
That's part of what we're, where we're trying to get Fishing Game to sit down with them to find out exactly what, what they have to say about that.
Do we have any idea how long it's going to take Fishing Game to get back to us?
Like I said, sir, we're, the earliest date they gave us was, was, was this Thursday. So that's the date we were pushing for. I haven't got confirmation of that yet. So we're going to, we'll keep on, we'll, we'll get, stay in touch with Melissa. Obviously, she's the one that, she's the point of contact with Fishing Game. So the other date they gave us was the 18th. So, so that's another, a week from Thursday. So we're trying to get it done this Thursday.
I'm just wondering what these delays are doing to our deadlines.
Well, they, well, they're the ones we're waiting on. I guess they had a, what, way it was explained to us, they had all these AOTs, obviously, because it, the, that was a statewide issue when they changed that. So all these AOTs are having to, had to be redone. Ours is one of them. So we turned ours in back in, oh, good Lord, October, I want to say. We've reached out to Mr. Mock at DES, and they, they extended us 30 days. They told us, well, what if we didn't want it, the extension? They said they'd just go ahead and tell us no now. So that was, we didn't really have a choice but to take, accept the extension the DES gave us. And again, it's Fishing Game is, is what we're waiting on. So hopefully, we'll meet, we'll talk with her on Thursday and find out where she, where she is on getting their, their paperwork in so we can get our AOT approved.
And is it, do, do these two things run concurrently? Or, I mean, will they go ahead and approve the, approve the AOT and then we do the easement after, or?
That's my understanding how it worked last time, sir. Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Lincoln, if, if he's on.
Well, that's what happened before.
Last one was in 2018, I think, is when the, the last AOT was approved.
Right. We're not sure what will happen this time around. It's a different permit.
I do see Lincoln's on with his hand up. I'm assuming that's him, ComDev.
I haven't seen it. Let's go down the bottom.
Lincoln, are you on?
I am, sir, yes.
Okay, Lincoln, you recognized?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the easement is part, was, was part of the initial permit and was actually negotiated as part of the application itself. As Chris had said earlier, is that permit has now been voided. And so we require a new discussion involving the level of mitigation that might be, might be required for this new permit, which will be discussed either on the 11th or the 18th of this month with Fishing Game and DES.
And is there, is there a sequence to this? Permit first and then the easement, or?
Yeah, so the last time, it was, the permit was issued first with the understanding that the easement would be finalized within a, within a span of time. I anticipate this happening also, the same process happening over again.
Okay, Mr. Freel?
This discussion, what they're having, because there's a lot, a lot going around here. Is this for the stewardship that we're talking about, the $30,000 that we want to come up for?
Yes.
Can we, can we just, I mean, I understand where everybody's going with this. And Paul mentioned, he had a great idea about having the vendor put the money up and then we discount them. Honestly, I'm for just authorizing John or whoever to pay for the stewardship and get it done, because we're not selling anything unless we get it done. And once we do get it done, we will get the money back in the sales of, of the gravel. So we've been going around and around about this thing, I think, now for a few different meetings. Can we just, like, maybe put it past us and just give authorization? To spend the money and get the stewardship done?
If we do that, I would suggest that it be conditional upon approval of the AOT.
Well, you need to, and, right, you need to have that and the easement, correct? Or those are the same thing?
They, they kind of work together, I, well.
But I'm just saying, we're going to wait for another meeting two weeks from now. So maybe if you wait for the 18th, I'm just saying, if you don't do it now, I say then we put it on the agenda for the 20-second meeting and just put a vote to it and be done with it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll know that if, if the AOT is, if it's done like we, like happened in 2018, we wouldn't have, we don't have to do the easement first. So we, we would know whether or not the AOT was approved and whether we would even need to spend money or not. So, but yeah, Mr. Freel's making that motion with the, its contingent on the AOT, that, that works just fine.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the spending of $30,000 for the stewardship, as long as we have those two things in place, the AOT and the easement.
Well, the $30,000 is for the easement.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. Freel, seconded by Mr. Darji, to approve spending of $30,000 for the easement, conditional upon approval of the permit, the AOT permit. Mr. Labonte?
I guess I have two questions, I guess, in regards to that. First question being, would the $30,000 come from that ARM grant, or where would the $30,000 come from?
I thought that we need that $20,000 of the ARM grant.
That is correct. I misspoke. It's $20,000, and that $20,000 is being spent on the required boundary survey. The $30,000 is additional.
And we'll get that money back in the sale of the gravel.
Correct. It come out of the revenues for the project. That's correct.
We're, we're not going anywhere without that. So it makes no sense not to spend money to make money.
But I guess, Mr. Chair, my first question would be that. And yes, I guess that is an option. My, my second question would be, would it be prudent to have it reviewed by town council to see if that falls under, as far as the, the contract with the contractor, to see if that would be an expense that would fall on them and not the town?
I'm not sure. Mr. Shannon, is that contract with the contractor still in, I want to say, is it still, still active considering that we're?
Yeah, it's, it's still active, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because basically, the, when they took the permit, all it would, all it really did was delay the, the process. Because I believe the original one, it was, the first one was signed, it was for what, five years? Lincoln, you can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but it was a multi-year contract to, to excavate gravel for, for a certain area for a certain period of time. So it is still in effect, yes, sir.
Okay. Knowing that we still have your question to answer, Mr. Labonte, Mr. Darji?
Yes, I have a question about the, the revenue that's coming in from selling the gravel. Would that be considered unanticipated revenue and could be appropriated and spent and applied towards this? Or is it considered anticipated revenue and we can't do it? And so the $30,000 would have to come out of the budget? I'm thinking that we didn't put any money in the budget for revenue for this. So I'm thinking it's unanticipated, so we could do that.
Mr. Calabria is online, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Calabria?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Daniels. We, we did put $10 in as a placeholder for the gravel revenue for this year.
So does that make it anticipated revenue?
I believe under the, under the definition, it would.
Okay, so if we go this route, we're basically taking money out of the budget, and it would have to be used for this as opposed to whatever it was in the budget for originally. Be used for this as opposed to whatever it was in the budget for originally. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Do you anticipate that we would be able to find $30,000 somewhere in the budget in calendar year 2021 to cover this?
Um, I think with the. With the outcome of how the warrant articles ended up for the not only the operating budget and the default budget. I would have to say that that is uncertain at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes, sir. So hey, Paul, Paul Clabber, correct me if I'm wrong, that we we do have, I know of. Two positions that we still haven't had. That we haven't hired to yet. We haven't found the people for them yet. So they're. You know, two, two, those two salaries, you know, would start adding up after a few months. We're we're. Probably March or April before do it. So we probably would be able to come up with 30,000. To end up, you know, if we spend 30 to make a 120, 150, whatever, you know, whatever the end up, the the bottom number ends up being. For the year and on on for, you know, if we need to, we I think we would be able to, Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that one, though.
Yeah, just again, I. I wouldn't want to commit to anything at this point with with how the warrant articles are currently written for the operating default budget.
Mr. Frail.
Uh, two things. So one, I take it that if we were to get the easement and get this ball rolling, we're going to make $30,000 back within the current fiscal year. Is that a good assumption? Anybody? Anybody?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so I'd like to also make an amendment to my motion that. You know, to what Chris said, what can we just add another stipulation that we check with town council? To make sure that the vendor isn't in their contract to pay for that easement. And if it isn't, we then move forward. Is that good, Chris?
A question, though, are we better off just to check with legal counsel and table this like you originally said till the next meeting? There will be so many more answers from the attorney will be able to answer it. You will then know from. The status of the AOT permit, there'll be a lot more things in order, I guess, at the next meeting. That's just my opinion, though, meaning to me, I guess.
I feel like. I always feel like we keep talking about the same thing over and over, and it's like, it'd be nice to move on.
But but I don't, it's not us that's holding it up, though. It's actually the state that's holding it up, not us.
That's correct.
Well. Does anyone know if the $30,000, does that have to be paid at one time? Can it can it be paid over a period of time?
We never got resolution on that answer.
Who would that come from?
Um, fishing game. Because they're the ones that will be holding the easement and they're the ones that are requiring the stewardship fund.
Doesn't make sense to wait until sometime after Thursday to to get answers to these questions. Andy or Chris, what do you feel about that?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I I brought this up because I wanted to make sure that you all put it into the budget. You didn't put it into the budget. So at this point. I feel like my my job was done to to let you know that this was a cost that was coming and it should be included in your budget. I don't understand how the town finances work. It seems to me if it ran it like my house. $30,000 is coming in, 30,000 went out. At the end of the day, in the bucket. It's all covered and it's all paid for, but I understand there has to be a way to track it. And that's where I get lost in Paul's weeds. I just can't figure that part out. But like Dave said, the money's coming in and the money's going out. The money is there. It's just how you track it.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't think that the money that comes in from a gravel operation. I mean, again, I don't know that it comes in. For use in the budget. It's. And that's all.
Whereas it goes somewhere.
Right.
The deposits do an account. I would think it goes in the general fund, Gary, now.
The Paul Paul Calabria, can can money be taken out of fun balance?
Not out of fun balance, Gary.
Okay. Where the money that we we get? Well, and I'm hearing you saying anticipated revenue, but. It would be far beyond what we anticipate. According to what you're saying, where does that money go?
It goes into the general fund under the gravel account. The gravel, the gravel revenue account.
So deposit money into the gravel account. Make the payment. And then when the gravel money comes back in, you put it back in that account.
How much money have we got in that account now?
Well, it lapses each year. As do all expenses and revenues into either surplus or deficit. I can look that up. I can tell you how much we received in 20.
2018, it was 2018, the last year we actually. 2019 was probably the last year, then.
Yeah, let me just. Bring that up.
Well, in truth, we should have received some money in 2020 because we bought sand out of there back in October, didn't we?
Well, Mr. Calabria is looking that up. Mr. Mr. Shannon, if. In in discussions with. Fishing game on Thursday, how how long would you expect that it would be before we're able to get something going?
Well, our, well, I'd have to ask Kevin about that with Northeast, how long it take him get his operation back going. But so we're hoping for the 11th, it might be the 18th, and the 30-day extension we got was for the 19th. So. If we're able to get speak with fish game on this Thursday. Hopefully, they'll get whatever paperwork they need. We'll get we'll we'll know by the 19th. Either we're approved or not, or I guess it's possible they could extend us again if fishing game hasn't followed through on their requirements yet, but. That's that's where those are the dates we know of right now. Now, if they extend us for another 30 days, it'd be into March. And I'm not sure how long it would take Kevin to get up and running, but I can get that information.
Now, is it the board that has to? Take action or what has to happen before the? 19th?
Well, if if the AOT is approved. On the 19th, it's like, if I don't want to speak with Chris, but last time it wasn't. You don't, they approved the AOT and then they started working on the easement. They still have to, Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Still have to do the surveying and everything before the easement can be. Finalized. So we would know about the.
Pretty well, the payment is about the last thing that gets done prior to recording the deed.
Right. So we we know whether or not we had an AOT in hand before. Andy and then they even spent their $20,000 on the survey, I would imagine. Is that correct, Andy?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Calabria, did you get an answer on that question?
It just came up, Chairman Daniels, excellent timing. In 2019, we received 135,128. We budgeted $150,000 that year. And in 2020, we had zero receipts on a budget of $10.
Mr. Calabria, didn't? We paid for sand from Northeast out of there back in October. I mean, the town of Milford actually cut a check to Northeast.
Yeah, for about $2,200, I believe it was. I don't have that invoice in front of me to see if that was something that DPW was using for.
They did. We we got some sand out of there, about half a day's worth. And then we got back on the. Somebody made a comment to DS. This was sand had already been screened. It was is was already prepared. So we were prepping for winter. So we did take some sand out of there. And I want to think that check that Slagman Lamont is, I want to say it was 2,200.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, that it was right around there. I can get you an exact number, but yeah, he Slagman Lamont is correct about that. But then they basically told us since the AOT was no good anymore, we couldn't do that anymore. Take sand out of our our pit or where they were working.
So was there anything in that gravel account, Mr. Calabria?
When you say, is there anything in there? What?
30,000 dollars in there.
Excuse me?
Is is there $30,000 in that account?
There is, there is no money in that account.
No money.
Yeah, he said he zeros it every year, I think.
Yeah, it's a process of closing the books. All the revenue and the expenses get closed out at year end.
Mr. Labonte, did you have something else?
Yes, part of my question, Mr. Clabber could probably help me on this. On like 2019 revenues, we made a hundred, a little over $135,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, that we had budgeted for 150 of anticipated. So in truth, we came in under. That I guess what I worry about is. When you get to the point where you. I understand you're saying there's only $10 anticipated this year. But I guess. Even if you were to bring in $100,000 for, say, you're going to show up at 70, which is still going to be, meaning after your 30,000 takeaway. I guess to me, the purpose of, correct me if I'm wrong, the purpose of the money coming in was supposed to be a revenue source to offset. Taxes, correct?
Yeah, it was it was part of the revenue calculation. For when we set the tax rate in the fall, yes.
Okay, like you said, I still would like to hear an answer from town council. My myself, because to me, like you said, when this was all sold in the beginning, it was going to be at no cost to the taxpayers. I understand that the way this is going to be is it's always not going to cost the taxpayer. Well, it is just pulling $30,000 worth of revenue out of them.
Mr. Frail. I hear what you're saying, Chris, but I'm going to tell you, and I'm not a I'm not a master of what we're talking about here. But from what I know in the building industry and everything, this easement will not be covered by them. They will not pay for that. That's going to be done by the people that own the land. So I'm going to say that they're they're going to cover, and I didn't even write up their contract or even look at it. But I bet you it only covers permits and that's it. Easements would be done by the owner of the land. And we're getting the money back anyway. But hey, if we could save $30,000, that's fine, but I don't know what it's going to cost to talk to town council to find out. I mean. Lincoln?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To answer Mr. Labonte's question. Unfortunately, there are unanticipated costs associated with this overall project where they were actually were not anticipated. As part of the warrant article that was approved by the town. One being the easement, two being the legal costs to defend the AOT permit to the state. So unfortunately, there's unanticipated costs. So. I'm not sure I understand Mr. Labonte's questions about there's no, no, no cost to the town. These are costs are unanticipated that we have to pay for going forward. Thank you.
I guess my my comment to that, Lincoln, would be originally when it was, I'm going to say pitch to the taxpayers, that it wasn't going to be a cost. We already have, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's 60 or 70,000 of expenses already on this gravel operation. Putting another $30,000 on this will breach us up to the $100,000 mark. Which when we've only brought in $250,000 off of this, I guess what I'm trying to say is, at what point can we keep sinking more money into this? When we're not really getting a huge gain out of it?
I guess my response to that, Mr. Labonte, would be is that because of the voiding of the initial permit by the state or by the Supreme Court. It has caused delays in the overall project. Had the absent the delay as a result of the boarding of the of the permit, the town would have seen more revenues being generated by this project. The easement. The 75 acres of mitigation being discussed. Was part of the ongoing discussions with fishing game and DES as part of the. Initial AOT permit. That was unanticipated to us. That was something that was offered as part of offside or onsite mitigation for the overall project. Unfortunately, there was a cost associated with which 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 we weren't aware of initially. But I think to your question, bigger point is that had the permit not been delayed or voided. The the town would have been in a bigger, bigger or better position. And I think since the town has resubmitted the application to the state, the goal again is to capture the revenues that were anticipated when this was initially approved.
The other question that I had, there was a follow-up meaning that I had asked prior, and I don't know if this. Would have fallen on you, Lincoln, or if it would have fallen on Mr. Shannon. I'm not actually sure who was going to get the answer out of it. I know I had met with the contractor. Back in 2019. And that was just when that first phase was getting finished up. And he had stated at that point, because we hit all that hard till. That that was actually going to cut us back. Quite a bit as far as our expected. Yardage and revenues out of that. Has anybody been able to clarify what the projected loss? From that is going to be?
Yeah, I have not. I have not verified that discussion nor the. Possible disparity, the amount of material that could be pulled out of out of the gravel operation. So that's something that. The town administrator and I will follow up with with the with contractor with and verify that and. Get a better understanding of what the discussion entailed and get back to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. So in the conversations I've had with Kevin. Over the the past year, so he he that he never mentioned anything that to me about that it was coming up. Less than what what they thought it was going to be. So again, like Mr. Daly said, we'll we'll get with him and and check that for you, but. He hasn't mentioned anything like that. Did you talk to Kevin Brown? Is that who you talked to, Slagman Lamont?
Yes, sir, I did. I did a site visit with him.
Okay, he's the one that told you that?
Yes, he did. And I can actually show you in the plans, meaning where the. The the area that was actually supposed to be leveled out, they did not become leveled out. So it will be a discrepancy in the plan.
Okay, then we'll speak to him again about that specific issue.
Mr. Frail.
I don't know if Mr. Shannon or Mr. Daly can answer me this, but if we were to get these permits in place, how long are these permits good for? How long will we be able to dig and sell gravel for?
The permit actually would, when we when we actually apply for the permit, we specify that the 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 timing of that permit. So I think initially we had a five, a three to five year time for initial permit. So I think it's. Going to cover the same amount of time to allow the town to continue to finish that operation.
So so three to five years after this new AOT permit, obviously. New England Sand and Gravel will have to pay for their own permits on a yearly basis, probably, right? Or are their permits three to five years as well?
No, no, it's there. The permit is for the operation itself. And I'll check on the law. I'll check on the timing of that. I may have misspoke, but. Is to cover the cost of cover the timeframe for that permit.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
It's not, it's not, it's my time fee. It's not an annual fee.
Correct, right. Yes, thank you.
After we do this work and we spend the $30,000 on the easement or the stewardship, actually, plus the $20,000 in. And. What do you call it there?
Grant.
A grant. You're talking about 375 to 525,000 of revenue. I think $30,000 is is worth it. To spend on that.
I think the question right now, if we take the motion. That you made, Mr. Frail, and go forward with that. Where does the money come from? Where does the 30,000 come from? Because I've heard from Mr. Calabria, we can't take it out of fund balance. We have nothing in the gravel account. I mean, the only the only option is that.
Can we take it on DPW's maybe are the biggest section of the budget? And just borrow it from one section? And then once it starts bringing in money, pay it back? I mean, I do that all the time in my company. You put money up and then you pay it back when the money comes in. I guess I'm not understanding that.
We end up under a default budget, though, which would put us down. Where would you grab the money from then?
But the money is going to come in 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 the anticipated funds that we get. So who, what's it matter? At the end, there's going to be a fund, there's going to be a surplus.
That's why I've been asking when when this would get going again.
That's why I'm thinking about trying to move it forward as fast as possible. But if you guys want to wait for another meeting and do this all over again.
No, I'm I'm fine. I just want I just want to know. I just want to know where the payment's coming from. I mean, there's nothing that has been said that. That the 30,000 can be paid off as we get it. That was a question I had for for conservation. I mean. Is that something that that's possible? But when are we going to start the operation again? When is the permit going to be available? I mean. All these things. I mean, in the meantime, it looks like we've got $10 stuck in anticipated revenue. From the gravel operation. So I'm with I'm with you that I would expect we would see more. Than that, but I'm just trying to. than that, but I'm just trying to search for a little thing, something a little bit more definite to know how this is going to work out as it goes along. Mr. Darji?
Yeah, because there's ten dollars in that revenue account, the money that's going to be coming in is considered to be anticipated revenue. So you can't just add it to the budget or anything, it just flows to reduce taxes. So the thirty thousand dollars would just come out of the budget, we'd have to take it in lieu of something else that's in the budget.
Well, that's sticky.
You know, that was why I was advocating for having the contractor pay the thirty thousand and then pay himself back by not paying for the material that he gets.
I mean, that is, that is a very great idea, and I'm surprised that they're fighting that, or I'm surprised they're not for that.
Oh, I don't think I've heard that they are not fight, I don't heard, I haven't heard that they're fighting it, but I heard that they don't want to spend the thirty thousand without getting repaid. But they wouldn't gravel.
I guess one more comment that if I could add on this is keep in mind, nobody expected at least a year delay in this to begin with. So even though we're on the hopeful side that this is going to progress and move forward, we still have no definitive answer on a timeframe, which I assume is why the contractor, if the contractor knew that we were going to be up and going, maybe he would consider that as an option. But the contractor may be taking the same scenario that we potentially could still be under a three month, six month. We, we don't know, we, we don't know a schedule, we, we don't know, and that, that's my biggest concern.
From, from my perspective, I would be okay with paying the thirty thousand, as Mr. Shannon spoke earlier. In all likelihood, thirty thousand could be found in the budget, you know, they had the two people that haven't been hired, so there's unfilled positions. My only concern is if we get a default budget, that's significantly less than the proposed budget, and we might have a little difficulty coming up with the thirty thousand. But even with the default budget, I think we could do it. So I guess I'm in favor of moving ahead with just paying the thirty thousand and getting things going. But, you know, it'd be nice to talk to the contractor one more time and see if they'd do it, that would be preferable. But it's not mandatory.
Okay, so since you are the, the one who seconded the motion, would your preference be to take the vote tonight or to wait till after Thursday?
And I'd say let's take the vote tonight and see what happens, right? Because, you know, the administration can actually monitor what's going on and wait until Thursday, and if things are significantly different, then maybe they could hold back on it. But I'd like to try to move forward with coming up with a solution.
Okay. And Mr. Freel, I see Mr. Calabria has his hand up, if I'll recognize him first in case he's additional information. Mr. Calabria?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Daniels. I just had a question for Andy and Chris. Is that something that, that thirty thousand dollars could be paid for out of conservation, knowing that you'll be receiving, potentially receiving those funds back?
I don't know, potentially, but that's something the commission would have to discuss, I think. But quite honestly, if you're going to do that, I want to cast, without a cast sign guarantee, it's coming back.
So we're in the same boat.
Freel? I was just thinking, it's just, it's too bad that we didn't think of this particular subject when we were going around and around about the extra money from the CARES Act that we were trying to buy vehicles and stuff for. This would have been a perfect thing to take thirty thousand dollars to, to move forward, something that could possibly bring in a revenue to the town. And it's too bad that we didn't think about this, because I would have made the motion on that, but I wasn't even thinking about this subject, and we had talked about it months prior, or a few meetings prior to that. I don't know if it's too late on that, I think, I think it is, right, Paul?
Yes, it is, and I think we would have had a hard time justifying a conservation easement with first responders' salaries reimbursements.
Really? Motion before us is to approve thirty thousand dollars conditional upon the approval of the permit. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take roll call. Mr. Darji?
Yes.
Mr. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Nope.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, and expect staff, staff, could you just keep us informed on what's happening? When, when you have the further talks with Fish and Game?
Yes, sir, we'll let you know what the Fish and Game DES tell us, and we'll reach out to Northeast as well, find out when they would actually be able, assuming that we get the permit next few weeks, how long it would take them to start up back work again?
Yes, and you might, might also check with them and see if they would be willing to, to do that.
The trade, yes, sir.
Yes. One more thing, Gary. Mr. Shannon, when you're talking to Northeast, can you ask how long it would be before we would receive thirty thousand dollars? So just in case Conservation does decide to help out, how long would it be before thirty thousand in revenue would come back? Is it one month, three months?
Well, if judging from the, the money that Paul said was made on the last full year we were doing, I don't think it was a full year, but they were making what around eleven, twelve thousand dollars a month, so I'd say three months. But I'll double check for you, but that's, that's my guess, is doing some basic math.
I'm thinking it might be good to give Conservation that information, if they know that within three months, starting in April, they'd have their money back, that would be helpful for them to make a decision and for us to find the money, I'm sure, if it doesn't.
Mr. Darji?
Yeah, I don't think that we'll be allowed to use the money that comes in as revenue to reimburse a conservation fund. Because that ten dollars is in there, it's anticipated revenue, no matter how much comes in. And so it flows back to the taxpayers. So I don't
Quite honestly, also, I would, I would say that based on our experience, you can, you can rely on it taking at least three months, just to get, just, just on this. If they're not going to give us any easement paperwork to start with, until that permit is issued, it's going to take at least three months just to get everybody to agree to the easement.
Okay.
Yeah, based on past experience. That's why we've asked for an extension on our grant from the original June, end of June deadline, because we know how long it takes.
But the thing is, I'm wrong, Mr. Darji, I think what you're referring to is that no matter if you get a million dollars in revenue coming in off the gravel, you can't use that to pay back that thirty thousand, is that where you're going with that, Mr. Darji?
Yeah, that's correct. There's, there's money in the budget that's anticipated, it's only ten dollars, it's a placeholder. It would be totally different response if it was zero dollars in that account. Because then even if you get a million dollars, it's, or one dollar, it's unanticipated revenue. And you can receive the money and appropriate it. But if, if it's anticipated revenue, you can't do that.
Gary? Okay, I don't want to go too much further on with the discussion without having a motion, but I recognize Mr. Freel.
I just have one more question, is it possible to open up another account, this is for Paul Calabria? So that when the gravel's sold, is it possible to build up a small little balance, kind of like a savings account? For stuff like this that comes up, like easements and stuff that might come along the way? That has to happen to keep the gravel operation, you know, going? Versus just every single dollar coming out, getting funneled right back to taxpayers that way? Or can some of it just be built up and saved? And then maybe when you find out, you get to a certain point, we could delegate it back into that account that would flow back to the taxpayer? Or is it?
You'd have to set up a, a capital reserve fund so that you could then deposit, you know, you would have to raise, you'd have to pick an amount each year to take from the gravel operations to put in a non-lapsing fund.
Is that a voting thing, or is that something we can go to the board?
That's a voting thing, that'd be a town meeting item.
Gotcha. Okay, well, thank you, let's, let's go on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Are there any items?
Mr. Chair, I see Claudia Lemire is here.
Yeah.
Now would be an appropriate time for her to talk if she wants to.
Right, and, yeah, thank you for being on, Claudia. I talked with Mr. Shannon today, what, what this has to do with is that the Boy Scouts Troop Four have been given, should I say, the BSA in, in the USA has been given the okay to stop meeting in person again. If you recall, earlier in the year, we had, or maybe it was last year, we had said that Troop Four would be able to use the auditorium upstairs, since then, we had closed Town Hall and weren't letting anyone in. Little bit of a time, time sensitivity here, because there are some scouts who are approaching Eagle. They need to get their projects done, they need to get their work in. And that's all age, age dependent too, so that's what's driving that. So I talked with Mr. Shannon earlier today, and he believes that since we already approved not to allow, allow Troop Four to use the auditorium, that we probably don't need to approve it again. Mr. Shannon, I'll let you take over, what does that mean for opening up Town Hall?
Yes, sir, so the, the closing Town Hall was, was, was made by, by my office, so now, we've, I talked with Claudia, and I know, and I know she reached out to the board as well, so their, their meetings are at night at seven, correct, seven PM, isn't that right, Claudia? So she's got
Yeah, seven to nine.
Yeah, they meet twice a month, I've already talked with Russ on, on as far as the staff goes here. You know, we've talked with Chief Flaherty. I mean, we, we just had a deliberative session, they're going to, and, you know, Claudia has said they're, you're using masks, they're using sanitizers, they're cleaning, so they're, they're taking, they're using all the, following all the protocols that we would ask that they need to follow. So I think the, the risk is, is minimum, and it is something that the board already voted on back, so I guess y'all would have to vote to reverse your approval of the Boy Scouts using the hall, but I think, I think the risk, there's no risk to staff really, and it's, and like I said, it's, it's at nighttime. So I, I think we're safe to move ahead, and I think Chief Flaherty is on, he can comment on it if he wanted to, but we did just have an in-person deliberative session. I think that shows that we can, we can do this safely, and how many scouts are we talking about, like ten, ten, ten kids?
Well, there's, there's eighteen scouts total, but on any given meeting, I'd say between twelve and fifteen scouts are in attendance with two leaders always present.
So twenty max, and they'll be using the auditorium, so the spacing and mask wearing and all that stuff is, is not an issue.
Thank you. Claudia, anything you want to add?
I just wanted to say how deeply appreciative Troop Four is to the town to allow us to do this, it's it's been, it takes years to become an Eagle Scout, as you know, and they work really hard, those boys, to get to that level, and I want to, you know, I want to encourage them, and I'm, I'm sure the town of Milford does too, to finish up with their projects and also encourage the younger scouts to, to continue, not meeting for several months really kind of slows down the wheels and starts, they start getting discouraged, so I, we're just very appreciative to be able to use the space and continue.
Okay, thank you. Chief Flaherty, anything you wanted to add?
No, I would support that, the use of the auditorium, just like they are at schools, most of the children and the Boy Scouts are familiar with how the schools are run, so that's a great model to go by.
Okay, thank you. So unless there is a motion from the board to change our previous decision, we'll leave it in Mr. Shannon's hands to reopen so that the scouts can go back to using the auditorium.
Thank you so much.
Being no objection. We'll authorize Mr. Shannon to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm wondering about the use of Town Hall for anybody other than the scouts. Is this like a, the opening thing for just the scouts we're talking about?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir, so the scouts is the only thing that y'all actually, that the board actually voted on. There are, we, there are a couple of recreation classes, there was a Tai Chi class that was about eight people, and there's I don't know, I'm going to blow the name on this, it's basically teaches kids how to be babysitters, and that's about six to nine students. Again, these are all school-aged children that are, are used to the thing, they haven't, we would hold them in the auditorium, we don't have anything scheduled right now, but we're looking at turning on things that it's possible to turn back on, that are very small groups, they're in the auditorium, they're spaced out. The Tai Chi's once, once or twice a month in the evenings again, and the babysitters classes, it's all one, one day, all six hours worth of training for them, so things of that nature, that are pretty small like that. You know, we've been in talks about when we could safely do that. I don't think Chief Flaherty has any problem just because of the numbers, or again, we're using, and the fact that these are small and we're able to distance, and, you know, the, the cleaning staff here is aware of and knows how to handle it. And we also control their entry points and do temperature checks. So if we did turn, you know, if we, we, when I make the decision to do that, unless the board wants to take that decision and make it yourself, so Irene's already, you know, wrangled a thermometer, so we can do temperature checks, mask wearing and the whole bit, so we're following all the guidance from the CDC and the state. And Chief Flaherty, obviously, is aware of it, and was in on that talks with Irene and myself, so so we're looking at maybe starting that back up in a couple of weeks. I, I, I think it'd be good. And since they are using the third deck, and we don't have any office space up on the third deck, and they can control where they come in and doing the temperature checks, and again, the mask and the wipe downs and everything, I, I think it's safe to do smaller groups like that nature. They're, they're half the size of what the Boy Scouts were talking about, so I, I think we'd be safe to do that. But again, if the board wants to, to vote on that, that's obviously your prerogative to do so.
Personally, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with just allowing the town administrator to work with his staff and doing, doing, doing what's necessary and safe.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, then we will go on to consent calendar, there's two items on the consent calendar. Request to reappoint Joan Darji and Michael Thornton as members of the zoning board of adjustment with terms expiring in 2024, and a request for approval of the annual parade permits, that's Memorial Day, Labor Day, and Veterans Day. Is there anything to be removed from the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I request that we remove A1 from the consent calendar.
Okay, four A1 is removed, anything else? If not, is there a motion then to approve for A2?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Darji, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Duziak. Mr. Darji?
Yes.
Ms. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, and four A2 has been approved, the chair recognizes Mr. Darji for four A1.
I just plan to recuse myself from this vote, so that's why I brought it off.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussions, is there a motion then pertaining to four A1?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve four A1.
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Duziak moves approval of four A1 on the consent calendars, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labonte. We'll call roll. Mr. Darji?
Recuse myself.
Thank you. Ms. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the vote carries four zero one with Selectman Darji recusing. Going on to other decisions under four B1, approval of revised purchasing and procurement policy.
Where is the change that we made on that, Mr. Chairman? I mean, is it, is it in this write-up, I guess?
I don't think it is.
Okay, that, that answers my question, because I looked and looked and looked and couldn't find it.
Yeah, it
Sir, if I may?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. So it should have been in section, I want to say it's section Roman numeral eight. So basically, when it starts listing the numbers off of what are the approval are, that we, we had, we added a sentence there that says these are all basically gross amounts. So all those numbers instead of putting, so any amount, any dollar figure on there in that section, section eight, is a gross amount now instead of a dollar only value. Does that make sense?
It does. And that is what was submitted for wording. However, I also went back in the minutes and looked at the motion by Mr. Freel last time to make this as gross amounts. And the, his, his motion actually had to do with amounts 25,000 and over.
Okay, well, we can simply add it to that one piece or all of them. I guess that's up to.
No, you know, just a quick discussion among the board.
If I may, Gary?
Yes.
To me, I guess as long as it's on gross appropriations, and I guess my other question would be is do you put anything in there just for clarification, whether it's not necessarily specified in dollars or trade-ins or whatever, it's any valuable resource?
That's what the gross would be.
Okay.
That would take care of that. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Selectmen Daniels, excuse me.
Tina.
Under section eight procurement process, you asked me to add at the end of the sentence. So the sentence would read, "The process for procurement of goods and services shall be as outlined below with each amount designated to be a gross amount." That's what you sent to me in an email. So that's what I put in the master file.
Okay, thank you. And that was the language I was just looking for. Everyone fine with that? Okay, so is there a motion to amend the policy with the language that Tina just read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Labonte. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Duziak. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call roll. Mr. Darji?
Yes.
Ms. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
Now the chair votes yes and the motion carries. And we're down to Mr. Shannon, Town Status Report. You're muted.
The first one, sir, I'm sorry, I apologize, has to do with the voter's guide and Tina's in charge of that. So I would, you're afforded her.
Yeah. I recognize it's Tina Filbert.
The town report went out to the printers on Friday. There was one minor issue that I was told about after, which was corrected today. They will be coming in tomorrow for me to review the proof and it will go to print. The voter's guide, the towns section is all done and complete. I'm still waiting for the schools section that will go to the printers tomorrow.
The, the school section goes to the printers tomorrow or everything goes tomorrow?
The whole, the voter's guide goes as a whole. So the school sent me some of their information today and they'll send me the, the rest of it tomorrow. I'll put it in the file and send it off to the, to be printed.
Excellent. And when that is sent out, is that going to be sent household?
That is going to be sent to one voter's guide per household in Milford. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there going to be other ones available? Meaning at Town Hall if somebody wanted to pick them up?
Probably.
Thank you.
Now, is it every household or just households that are, that have a registered voter?
I think it's every household. We did not separate that. It's too much of a nightmare according to the town clerk.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Shannon, back to you for recycling update.
Yes, sir. So the transfer station, we've, we've been taking aluminum, steel, tin cans, glass bottles and glass jars, corrugated cardboard and clean mixed paper magazines. Now, the last thing we're, we're scheduled to start taking again is plastics. I'm meeting, I spoke with the DPW today. The supervisor for the transfer station submitted her plan on the 29th of January. DPW and I are sitting down on Wednesday morning. We'll finalize that. Once we have a, that, you know, the final plan in place, we'll start advertising that and we'll look to turn it on. Probably, our, our goal is next week, but we'll make sure it makes it on the town website and the Facebook pages and all that kind of stuff when plastics. And we'll make sure that it's advertised actually at the transfer station as well. So that should get us back up to taking everything back in. That was the, the last piece of the puzzle, so to speak. So we're looking to do that hopefully next week. I have that, everything back online.
Do you know if the process inside the transfer station is going to be different than it was before?
It probably will look a little bit different. The, you know, I know they have separate hoppers and everything for things right now, but once the DPW and I sit down Wednesday, we'll have that ironed out. I guess we'll probably send it to the recycling committee for them to have a once-over-two since they're involved in this and in case they see any, any issues or have some, some good ideas or something. So like I said, he and I are sitting at 8:30 on Wednesday morning this week. And we'll have a plan when he and I are done and we can forward that to the recycling committee for their review and then and we'll be good to go after that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Darji?
Yes, what was the recommendation from the supervisor of the transfer station as to when you should start doing this?
Well, in the original email she sent, sir, she was, she wanted to wait until April. I felt that she, she had health and safety concerns for staff and for the citizens, but we've been taking other things and the way, we're, we're not doing it exactly the same process we were last time. So again, we, the safety of our staff is paramount. It's the most important thing to me and our citizens. So we'll make sure that, you know, there's, there was questions about coming into contact with, you know, saliva and that sort of thing like that. So we're, we're going to mitigate that. Make sure they're not handling and stuff as much like that to fix that. So after emailing back and forth with her, she, she got us a plan so we could open up about two months sooner than that. Because everything that goes into, when we keep putting all the plastics, keep going into the regular trash, obviously that's more regular trash and we're paying for that. So there is a cost involvement as well. So our hope is to have it back offline, safe and running before, like I said, before the end of the month, hopefully not, hopefully next week. Week after at the latest.
Follow up?
Yeah. I presume there's going to be sorting. The other materials, there's minimal sorting. They kind of look at the aluminum cans, for example, and look for other things that accidentally got in there. But it's pretty minimal. People are pretty good about doing it. The plastic is totally different. They have to, excuse me for a second. They have to physically pick up each piece and put it in different containers, you know, because it's all commingled.
Yes, sir.
And so to me, it's, it's a, from a safety perspective, it's much worse than the other ones.
Yes, sir, that, I apologize. Yes, sir, that's why it's the last one that we're turning back on. So once we meet with, once the DPW and I sit down and we'll, and come up with something, we'll, again, we'll talk again with with the supervisor out there. And once we, we'll send it to the recycling committee for their review. And Chief Flaherty, obviously we can, we'll loop him in as far as that goes. But I, I believe that if, if we can do it safely, we'll, we'll get, now if it comes out that we just, we're looking at it and we just can't figure out a way that it's, we've mitigated the risk as much as possible where it's an acceptable amount of risk, then obviously that's a, that's a different decision. But I, I think, I think we should be able to do it. Other communities are doing it and doing it safely. So I believe we can follow suit with that. That's our goal.
I think if you were able to, like, limit the amount of plastics to maybe milk containers and like laundry detergent ones, you know, just that whatever ones are valuable.
Yes, sir.
And have people that are dropping them off sort them out. So you'd have a bucket for milk containers and a bucket for laundry detergent.
Yes, sir. That's, that's the plan is to have them, people bring them already sorted out. So that's part of what we'll be working out Wednesday morning. We, we don't want our folks having to, you know, somebody's, they used to dump it basically on thing and our guys were going through it. So we don't want to do that again. So if we can have them, you know, it's like you said, like pre-sorted as much as possible. That's, that's part of the, part of the goal in place. Part of what we're going to talk about on Wednesday morning. And again, we can, we can send the final plan to the board for review. And if y'all so choose, we can, you know, have a discussion about it on the 22nd at your next meeting before we turn it back on, if y'all'd rather do that.
Personally, I would like to do it that way because I'm kind of nervous about that. So it is sort of a risk.
I understand. And like I said, we're, we'll mitigate it as much as we can. If we're still not comfortable with it, we won't do it. But like I said, other, other, other communities are doing it. So we'll try to figure out the best way to do it. Again, we get recycling committees input and then we can ring it back to the board on the 22nd before we, before we turn it back on.
Uh, thank you much.
Yes, sir.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, any reports from boards, commissions, committees? Seeing none. Tina, did you get everybody signed up yet? Or has, has that sign up sheet not going around yet?
It is. That is still a work in progress, sir.
Okay.
You are referring to the work of the election, correct?
I am.
Yes, yes, sir. Work in progress. Selectman Freel is the only one that I'm aware of sent one back. And then two of you are already excused because you're on the ballot. So we'll, we'll be reaching out to some, some pinch hitters, so to speak. Some stand-ins.
Select, Selectwoman Duziak says she's looking forward to spending all day there.
All day.
Okay, we have minutes from January 25th and January 30th for approval.
Gary, I got a question for you.
Yes.
On other items not on the agenda for selectmen's reports and discussions.
Yeah, we can go back there. Go ahead.
Has, has the town of Milford made a decision at all in regards to that January 4th letter that came from the town of Wilton? In regards to the MAC intermunicipal agreement, meaning where they had requested to meet with us, I assume by a virtual meeting? I guess have we got back to them at all?
I don't, I, I don't, I have not personally. I know there has been some discussion about waiting till after the March vote. So we have a better idea of which direction we're heading.
Would it ever be advantageous for us to meet with them to have, I don't want to say a two-part discussion, but whether it be on the IMA or even just be a part discussion of even the first responders network? Many, I don't think that, to the best of my knowledge, there's no contact that's ever been made with the other towns.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we have figured everything out yet. We have discussed that being a standalone department. We, we could start working on, on something to identify the different committees and how they're going to be structured. But again, that seems to be something that's more appropriate after we know what the voters choose for a direction.
Okay. And I, I can respect that. I guess what I would like to see, and I don't know if I would need to make a motion or just a request out of this. Can we at least respond to this? Meaning to their request, instead of just kind of leaving it in limbo?
We, we can, we can check. If we have not given them a formal response, we can do that.
Okay. Who would be the one that does the response or what would the response even be? Or would that be done through Mr. Shannon? Or how, I guess, I, I don't know, seeing as their board had, Wilton's select board had addressed it to us. Should it be us or should be Mr. Shannon? I, I just, I always try and, I'm going to say anybody that reaches out. I just feel that everybody always deserves a reply.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. So now I can't speak for the board, but I have spoken to the town administrator over in Wilton since then. So he, he knows where we stand and he, he sent me an email. So we, we have had communications and they know where we stand on below the board. I can't speak for the board level as far as any, if any of the selectmen have talked to any of their selectmen. But I can say that the, the staffs, I have been in touch with, with, with Mr. Branscombe and, and he wrote me back, I want to say it was last week or the week before prior as far as Mount Vernon goes. So there have been discussions about when we should, timing and what we need to talk about and that sort of things on our level. But as far as the board, I can't speak to what any of you may or may not have reached out to anybody.
Mr. Freel?
Hey, Gary, I was just wondering if we could have a small discussion or I don't know how the board feels about it, but possibly going back to a hybrid meeting and get back into the boardroom.
I think if we're, if we're opening up Town Hall, I think that's probably a possibility.
Like when, when, how do we go about that? We have to vote on it or we just?
I think you just make a decision.
I mean, I'm not saying we have to open up, as much as I'd love to open up Town Hall to the public as well, but I'm not saying we have to do that. But
You do, you, you do. If you have three people, if you have the majority of the board at that location, the doors have to be open to the public.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying that. At the meetings, yes. I'm saying, I'm not saying that they have to open up like, let's say, town clerk. As much as I, I would love that to start happening soon, but you know, I, obviously I don't know what the governor's current rules are. But I would personally like to go back to at least a hybrid meeting. I understand some of us, some of the board members don't want to go into the meeting at this time. But it would be nice to get back to some sort of a normalcy on it or have the option. Okay.
I agree with you. Selectment for you.
Thank you. Okay, we can take, we can take that up. As far as the, the letter to the other, other towns, how do board members feel? Would you prefer to wait until after the March election?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I could go either way on that. It doesn't matter to me before.
Like I say, Gary, I guess the way that I look at it is, I guess I just feel at what point, if there's the possibility is going to be there that if we're in Article Three passes, that, you know, Milford would like to entertain having Wilton and Mount Vernon as customers. CTA has already given a presentation to the other, I'm going to call it Board of Governor reps of MAC base. I'm not saying that they've given it to, but, but they've already outlined their cost of what it would cost for infrastructure.
Well, that's not the only consideration though.
Oh, no, I, I understand. I guess I'm saying, but you have to start a conversation somewhere.
One of the major benefits to anyone who, who comes on as a customer would be that each of their emergency services will have a representative on the operations and the financial committee. We haven't even talked about how those are going to be structured. And I'm just saying, I, I think that we need, we need to do our homework and we need to figure out the way things are, what, you know, how things are going to work and before we just go out and have, just have a random talk because I, I don't want to spend a lot of time and come away from there feeling like we've accomplished nothing.
I, I guess I understand exactly what you're saying on that. But, but the other side of me is if it's going to be presented to the taxpayers that this is going to be a benefit, I feel that that should be a crease that's ironed out prior to voting. Or at least started to attempt to be, to see how it's received. Because if it's, if it's not received well, then I don't, I don't know how that we can, you know, present that, you know, with hopes these other towns are going to come to help offset, meaning when that actually may not be true.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. So this, this might, my two cents. The, the other two towns are aware what the circumstances are. They know it's on our warrant articles. The board of governors sort of met, they got, kind of got interrupted the other day. But everybody understands what, what's, what's going on. I don't think anybody's unclear about that. Now, I know the, the votes in what, four weeks? Just in my personal experience. Now, I know the, the votes in what, four weeks? Just in my personal experience, seeing all the boards together at one time and not knowing what the future actually is, I'm not sure that there's any value added to that right now. Until we actually know what course we're taking. My, my concern is, I guess, with, with the chairman sort of stated, you could, you could be meeting on something that would end up wasting a lot of people's time because we, we thought it was going to be A and it ends up being B. So I'm not sure of the value added of all the boards getting together. And I can keep having discussions at, at our level and kind of talking about different things and ideas to, to sort of lay a little more groundwork in, in that area. But it's just when, when the three towns get together not knowing what they're actually going to be discussing. And again, if, if it's, if, if it is the, the first responders communications network, the other two towns don't, don't get a say in how that's designed. That's up to, to the board. They don't get to say, well, we want you to, we want you to put your department here or we want your department there. So again, I, I think that we might be getting input from two other towns that wouldn't have input, other, any more input in where that department goes here in our town. If it is solely ours anymore, they would do the community development department or anybody else. So I think it's probably premature. I think I'd have to agree with the chairman on that. It might be, it's just a little premature not knowing what, what we're actually going to be discussing.
I, I guess just for clarification, Mr. Shannon, I guess what I was referred to not, I, I agree with you 100% as far as that the other towns will have no say on where, on where it goes. Meaning I, I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to say is more clarification, meaning if there would be even, I'm going to say a little interest from the other towns, if they had interest, if they didn't have interest in coming to Milford, that also spells out another story.
And I, and I guess I don't, I don't see why that can't wait till after the vote. I mean, I think, I still think we could accomplish much more if, once we know the direction that we're heading.
I, I guess where I was going with that, Mr. Chairman, is I, I just felt that maybe if the voters saw more interest from the other towns, maybe they would be more confident in voting for it. So I guess I was trying to put that out as a plug maybe for it.
Mr. Shannon?
I mean, if somebody, I mean, you can make a motion to, 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 to do just that if you, if you, if you wanted to. And then, you know, we would obviously abide by whatever the board voted. If you're, if that was, I don't, I can't tell if you're making a motion or just a suggestion.
There is no motion. There is no motion on the floor. Okay. All right. We, we have the minutes of January 25th, January 30th. That's a deliberative session revote.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for January 25th, 2021 and January 30th, 2021 as presented. Then I have a comment afterwards.
Motion by Mr. Darji to present, to approve the minutes of January 25th and January 30th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Duziak. Mr. Darji, you recognized?
I just wanted to bring out to the public that we met after the deliberative session. And there were two things that were done. A number of board members changed their votes from being in favor of some items to being opposed to them. And also the default budget was reduced by $100,000. If anybody's interested in finding the details of what went down, the minutes will be posted on the town website soon.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, the motion before us is the approval of January 25th and January 30th minutes. Call roll, Mr. Darji?
Yes.
Ms. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes and the motion carries. So as far as notices, the town hall and town clerk's office will be closed on Monday, February 15th in observance of President's, President's Day holiday. The Board of Selectment Candidate Forum will be held on Wednesday, February 17th at 6:00 PM. This will be a Zoom meeting. All the information will be posted on the town's website under the calendar area. The next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be held on Monday, February 22nd at 5:30. Tentatively, this will be a Zoom meeting. I'll discuss the possibility of having a hybrid meeting sometime before that. And that information will be posted on the town website as well as any access to Zoom will be posted on the web, town's website on or before February 19th, 2021. We do have a non-public this evening in accordance with RSA 91832A Personnel and Approval of Non-Public Minutes, RSA 91832A Personnel, January 11th, 2021. And let's see, RSA 91832A Personnel, January 25th and RSA 91832B Personnel, January 25th. So is there a motion to go into non-public under those statutes?
So moved. Second.
By Mr. Freel. And seconded by whom? Second by Mr. Darji. Call roll, Mr. Darji?
Yes.
Ms. Duziak?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Mr. Freel?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes and we will be in non-public. I want to thank the public for joining us this evening. Have a great evening.